Good evening, everybody. Thank you for coming. My name is Tinesse Ross. I'm the chairman of the Norton School Committee. Welcome to the open forum on the return to school. Before we get started, a couple of things. First and foremost, you are required to wear a mask in the school building as a visitor, as a staff, as a student. If you have medical exemption, you're of course exempt. If you do not, please wear a mask. While I appreciate a good protest as much as the next guy, if you're not wearing a mask, you're not ready to protest against the right people. You're simply making it awkward for your friends and neighbors. So if you are able to wear a mask, please do so. Thank you. Okay, next up, I want to set some expectations for the meeting tonight, just so we're kind of all on the same page. First and foremost, as you see with me right now, if you are in fact at a mic speaking, you're welcome to take off your mask if you're comfortable doing so. Not required to, but you're welcome to do so if you feel like you want to. Okay, some expectations here. Let's please be respectful both while speaking and while seated.
Recording in progress.
And the recording is in progress. Please be respectful both while speaking and while seated. No personal attacks on other attendees. This includes the school administration. While Dr. Byetta and I do not often disagree, when we do, I can respect his opinion. The reason I can respect his opinion is because I know that he and his team approach every decision thoughtfully, and they genuinely care about the students in this district. They've done an excellent job navigating us through uncharted territory, and for that alone, they deserve our respect at least. Disagreeing with somebody isn't a reason to vilify them. Remembering that would serve us all well in life. I understand this is an extremely heated subject for some, and therefore their emotions will run high. If I feel you are being disrespectful, I'm going to let you know. If you continue, I'll ask you to take a break to collect your emotions and come back once you've composed yourself. If you continue to be disrespectful or cause a disturbance, I'm going to have you either removed from the meeting or I'm going to stop the meeting. We have too many people here tonight that wish to respectfully voice their opinions, and we simply cannot afford to turn it into a free-for-all. I hope you can all understand and agree with that. We're going to begin by allowing speakers approximately three minutes of time. This is to ensure that we can allow as many possible comments before, I'm sorry, before we run out of time. We're not going to cut off the mic in three minutes, but I will ask you to conclude your comments. Once everyone who wishes to speak has had a chance, we'll return to those that wish to continue their comments. At that point, we'll allow for a reasonable length of time depending on how many still wish to speak. No matter what, all will have a chance to speak until they believe they've said what they need to say. It may be broken into two or into three parts, but I will stay here until every comment is heard. Please keep in mind that we are not in a position to change what has been mandated by DESI. You're free to express your displeasure with the mandate in place, but understand that whether we agree or disagree with it, that mandate will stay in place until DESI rescinds it. On that topic, I do want to clear up something regarding the mandate currently in place. And Dr. Byetta, if I misspeak here, feel free to correct me. There seems to be a fundamental misunderstanding regarding the mandate and who it's directed towards. DESI has authority over school districts, not town citizens. The mandate does not allow us, the school district, to accept a student into school that refuses to wear a mask. A student without a mask, under the current mandate, would be ineligible to attend. We've recently been told that we can simply allow those without a mask into school with decline to discipline. In my opinion, that would be tantamount to ignoring a lawful mandate, which we will not give. The opinions offered by the CDC and DESI regarding districts not disciplining children refers to discipline above and beyond the student not being eligible to attend the school. I don't believe we should be disciplining children for noncompliance, but that still doesn't allow us to let them attend without a mask. The mandate is binding under Mass Tower Law. If you disagree and believe we should be ignoring such mandates as a matter of course, then as I always say, you are free to hire a legal counsel and pursue that to the fullest extent of the law. With that, we're going to open up the forum. When it's your turn to speak, please state your first and last name and your street address here in Norton prior to your comments. We have a microphone right down here in front. Is there anybody who wishes to address this question?
How you doing? Name's Sean, three for the circle. I'm here to say no to masks. What are we doing with the masks? People are getting sick. We're telling them that they're not being safe. We're telling them that they're somehow a threat to people. And it's not true. I take my daughter to Florida several times. Wherever we go, she doesn't wear the mask. She knows that she's safe. She knows that I'll keep her safe by keeping her safe, wearing her seatbelt, doing things that actually matter. The mask doesn't work. It doesn't stop the virus. I mean, if the masks worked, why isn't the mask working? It's not working, and I don't want you to put my daughter in the mask. It's abusive on many levels. Whatever this DESI agency is that I've never heard of, like apparently now I'm getting more involved. Why aren't you fighting back against DESI? But what's the numbers we're talking about here? People are getting sick. How many kids have died of this? Less than 500. Less than 500 out of 600,000, I think it was 644. So less than 500 kids have died of this. They don't get sick. They don't transmit it. My daughter's fine, but she comes here, and she's told that she's not safe. She's going to hurt somebody. That's confusing as hell to me.
Recording in progress.
I really have nothing else to say, but it's wrong. No masks, and I hope one day you look back and see it really is abusive.
Thank you, comments. And I wanted to point out that I was grabbing my phone now because I was ignoring what I was saying. It's not watching. Any other comments? Now, before you start, I'm going to actually call a model here. We don't seem to have that many people here, so I'm going to allow for more than three minutes. And if you get to a point where it seems to be getting repetitive or too long, I'll ask you to round it up and wait until at least I have a chance, if that's okay. Any other comments?
Yeah, I was pretty sure. What I'm here for is to ask, as a parent, for the committee to voice our voices and our opinions regarding this vaccine day. We're two years into this pandemic. And what we basically know, because that is highly contagious, we also know that we do not have a vaccine that will stop or eradicate Corona. So at this point, there is no end in sight in regards to the pandemic. What we also know is that with all the variants that are coming, we have data that shows that children are not highly infected, thank God, to the coronavirus. They're not at risk of death. They also do not provide high viral load in our vehicles of contaminating others and passing along the virus. With that, we also know that it's highly criticized regarding the masks, which unfortunately may really should not be. This is about our children. We need to weigh in with our politics, our emotions, how we feel with fear of the virus. Really, at home, we need to say clearly what's best for our children. In addition to that, if you look at the CDC studies that they have reported that are backing the recommendations of masks in schools, you will see that none of the studies have isolated the other mediation factors as well as isolating the efficiency of masks. So if you look at the data in regards to the mask efficiency, what they're reporting, the 39%, that reduces transmission, you will see that they're not identifying and isolating the other mediation factors that schools have done, such as remote learning, as well as improving their ventilation. So us as parents asking the school committee to voice and say no to masks, we're not asking something that is new. If you look at other countries such as UK, Ireland, Scandinavia, France, Netherlands, Italy, Spain, they're not masking their school kids. And the data has shown that there is no evidence or data to have shown that they have a higher transmission rate than other schools that have masking rates. So at this point, we have, you know, a virus that is not highly dangerous to our children. We have masks that do not have really scientific data to show that they have a high efficiency. We have a virus that is here to say, why are we masking our kids? To what benefit? If all the data that has shown on countries and states that have not masked their kids, that they're not having a higher infection rate. Are we masking our kids for them, or for parents, or people who are overly cautious or fearful? I do believe it should be a parent's choice whether they mask their children, and they should ultimately do their own research and do the best for their child. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jenkins Thomason. I live on James Street, 10 James Street, here in Norton. And I want to first thank Dr. Byetta and the school committee for doing this. I really appreciate it. And so I would, I think, take issue with one of your opening remarks. Of course, I guess I could be misled, but not about the language. According to the DESI requirement, mask requirement of August 25, it states that whether or when a student should be disciplined for failure to wear a mask is up to the school committee, the local school committee. So whether or when puts the ball in your court. Whether means you may or you may not discipline. When means now or later. So I've spoken with some legal counsel, and the legal counsel said that the state has put liability on the towns with that language. So it is a choice that you have as to whether or when you will discipline a student for not wearing a mask, for failure to wear a mask. So my request, and that's DESI's language, that's a quote, bullet point six, page two. So my request is simply this. Take no disciplinary action towards students who refuse to wear a mask. Allow students who wish to wear a mask to wear a mask. Allow students who do not wish to wear a mask to not wear a mask. And so in doing so, I think this is very important for you. If I put myself in your shoes, I think this is very important. That in doing so, if you decided to take no disciplinary steps towards students who didn't wear a mask, you would in no way be violating DESI's mask requirements because they put it on you for enforcement whether or when. You would not be breaking a state or a federal law. We're not asking you to rebel against DESI in any way. We're simply asking you to take a course of action that's different from the one that you've chosen, which would be to not discipline. I think, so that's number one. I think granting this request, and of course, that would be supported by DESI's mask, implementation of DESI's mask requirement of August 25, would also be supported by Kingston's, Kingston, the town of Kingston, had their school committee meeting on YouTube at timestamp 31 minutes and 35 seconds. Their counsel says that he spoke with DESI Department of Primary and Secondary Education, and they said they recommend no discipline for students who fail to wear a mask. So I want to be as, just as, I know some of you, I appreciate Dr. Byetta. He's opened his door to be in my family a number of times, and I'm grateful. But I would ask you just, there is no power above you that's telling you you must punish these children. You must exclude them if they don't wear a mask. And so you can choose not to do so. Then by granting this request, you will faithfully represent all parents and children in Norton, both those who want their children to be masked and those who do not. The Norton Public School Policy says that the committee therefore reaffirms and declares its intent to, number three, act as a truly representative body for members of the community in matters involving public education. So I would say that you could vary, this doesn't have to be an either-or situation. You would represent those parents who want children to be masked by allowing them to be masked. You could represent those who don't want their children to be masked for allowing them not to be masked. And so it doesn't have to be an all-or-nothing situation. Number three is that as parents, we do have the right to give consent for medical care to our children. A mask is a medical device, as noted by the FDA. The school committee policy states districts, the district recognizes that parents, guardians, have the primary responsibility for the health of their students. So I, we have the right to inform consent and to deny informed consent when such items are under emergency youth authorization by the Food and Drug Administration. And masks are not approved for stopping viral infection by the FDA. They are not approved for that. And so to then force them to wear a mask would amount to coercion to something that cannot be forced, which is consent to use a medical device that is not approved for what it's being used for. So the right to deny consent, number five. And of course, you know, I've done, as many of us have, loads and loads of reading. So published scientific studies and the Center for Disease Control statements indicate that surgical and cloth masks are ineffective in reducing viral COVID-19 infection. The CDC itself says that there have been 14 randomized controlled studies done on surgical masks. On its own website, it says surgical masks are not designed to stop viral infection. They are, and the FDA has not approved them for that because they don't work. So what they're designed for is to stop wound infection from some, that's what they, I say that because that's what the CDC says on their own website. There are, as I said, there's 14 randomized controlled studies out there. We can all read them. The latest comes out of Denmark, and they did a latest study just this year and found that those who wore masks and those who did not have, there's statistically irrelevant, that's not the word I'm looking for, but statistically insignificant difference between those who wear masks and those who do not. These are all, I have a copy of what I was saying for you. These are all, these all, these come from world-renowned medical journals. None of it's, this is all, you know, seriously studies stuff. Of course, the lady that spoke before me referred to other countries. There's been studies done in Sweden, Sweden, which we all know never, Sweden from the beginning of this pandemic, never required masks in their public schools or social distancing. Studies of the country of Sweden show that neither students nor teachers, and I think this is another very important point, because it's not just the students, it's the teachers as well. Neither the students nor the teachers had a higher incidence of infection than the rest of the population. Okay, so I don't see how we get around it. So evidence has, there's much evidence that, I mean, to give a word picture that I've heard used by people who study masks and everything, is that using a mask to stop the coronavirus is like using a chain link fence as a mosquito net. The virus is too small to be stopped by the mask that we're wearing. Now, my wife is, says the problem with all this is that it seems very intuitive that to put something over your face will help and grant, and we all want to be able to do something about this. But according to the studies, masks do not help. They do not stop infection with the coronavirus. Evidence also indicates that wearing a mask for a long, prolonged period of time, not only for adults but for children, causes health, social, emotional, and educational problems. I think we're going to have a demonstration here about just how much carbon dioxide builds up behind your mask in a very short period of time. And if this building was filled with that much carbon dioxide, parts per million, no one would be allowed in here if we were not, if we were absent of the coronavirus pandemic. Finally, published scientific studies indicate that people who have already been infected with the coronavirus have better, longer-lasting, stronger immunity to reinfection, including the Delta variant, than someone who has been vaccinated. This is studied as well. I have citations here. So as a secondary issue, once we got to October, I think it was first, and we reached 80% of the school population being vaccinated, there would be, it would be unreasonable or without support, let me say, without scientific support to say that students who have already been infected and have documentation of that should therefore have to be immunized, vaccinated in order to not wear a mask. There are plenty of studies also that show that young men in particular are susceptible to myocarditis and myocarditis as a result of the vaccine. And I could go on, but the last thing I'll say is that, is that I'm not an anti-vaxxer. Our children are all vaccinated, okay? I'm not an anti-masker. I, so, but there, the FERS, which is the vaccine adverse reaction report on the, from the CDC, this vaccine has a very high rate of adverse reactions compared to others. And so someone who is previously infected, and it's also been argued that if you have been previously infected and certain, and even recently, that being vaccinated after that can increase the danger of vaccination. So I would just ask in closing that you choose to do, exercise the freedom that DESI has allowed you, which is whether or when to discipline, and choose not to, choose not to exclude students and send them home again. Excluding students from in-person learning, we've had enough of that. And I very much appreciate your time and attention.
How you doing? My name is Mike Plonell in Saranfala. My daughter's only six years old. As you can see, can you see this one here? It says the PPMs in this room, the CO2 is at 485. As I'm wearing the mask, and I breathe in this thing, it's going to go up. I have already done this, and we reached 5,000 PPMs. With 5,000 PPMs, that is enough to put you in a situation that is that you're going to have a stroke, you could actually fall into a coma, and you get extremely sick, and messes with, sorry, and I have to deal with, sorry. You can get very sick from wearing the mask long-term, hopefully. As you can see, it's already stopping. It does not take long for this to go up. It will reach possibly 5,000 right now. It's extremely unhealthy for our children to be wearing this mask during school. It messes with your breathing, it messes with your memory, your being able to pay attention. Anything that you leave for school, it will mess with their education. They're literally going to be going backwards instead of forward. This is science right there. I mean, if you guys had a building that was at 1,000 PPMs, you would not allow in that building for 48 hours. You would not allow in that building for 48 hours. You guys know that, if you guys look up all the vaccinations. They come in with this device, and they check it. And it's extremely bad. And I can also test the amount of particles that are coming out. And I think I had 20,000 particles coming out in five minutes, five minutes period. With that being said, you could simply stop breathing in that air. When you breathe in your own saliva, I can't tell you that each one of those particles was saliva or not, but as you're breathing in your own saliva, you're getting a bone. You are more likely to get sick and die from wearing a mask than you are walking around without a mask. I think that once this thing leaves, it's horrible and too bad. I don't know what, what does it say?
257.
257.
And that's cloth masks.
That's cloth masks. I did a demonstration with a group of parents or a teacher that was curious on how bad it was. Within five minutes, she hit 3,000 PPMs.
2150.
This is extremely bad for our children. It's bad for every single one of the last few learners. It is extremely bad.
How?
It is.
If you start showering after the card, it's going to be shut off.
I'm sorry, it's kind of hard to talk with a mask on, too.
It's still very cold.
I mean, unless you guys want to acknowledge this, then you guys get enough.
If you have any comments.
All right. As I pulled it off, it's at 2734. But I had, I have a video of you putting it on for a few minutes. And within that, that one minute and like 40 seconds or something like that, I reached 5,000 PPMs. That's extremely bad here. The kids wearing, I'm saying you guys literally, gentlemen, but them wearing the mask, everyone when you're wearing the mask is shorting your life. You're killing your brain cells. Your body, you haven't got enough oxygen. You need oxygen. CO2 is extremely bad here. This is, this is showing, you got to decide if our kid's going to live to 80 or if they're going to live to 60. And if they're going to live to 60, they might want a school education. The average lifespan is 80 in this country. We're literally taking 20 years off our children's lives by sending them to school. That is, it's unfair. It's not right. That's all I have to say.
I'm Bonnie Ezekevich. I have two middle schoolers, one of whom is not vaccinated. He's not yet to be, yes, he will be on his birthday in October. I am grateful to all of you who have instituted the mask banning. I also feel that what I was just listening to is not commensurate with the scientific evidence that I looked into when I read. Doctors wear the type of masks that Sherry and Dan are wearing every day, and they're healthy, and they would suggest that in a case where someone had an infection that they could transmit. I've not heard of anyone being sick or dying from wearing a mask where they were a child or an adult over the past year and a half. I have heard about several hundred thousand people who have died of COVID. I do know that for myself and other people who have some health issues or are a little compromised, if their child were to contract or contract the infection at school and be safe themselves and not get sick themselves, they could also pass it on to one of their grandparents where someone else was unable to get the vaccine. So I'm in favor of mask wearing, and like I said, I appreciate all of you who thought a lot of work to think about what is the safest for children. And just wanted to show my support for that, since we've heard a lot of voices that are not in support. And I appreciate all the work that you've all done. Thank you.
Hi. My name is Amy Weber, and I am a third grade teacher at the JCS. Over the last year, I have learned just how adaptable children can be. Last year, my students and I wore masks every day. Yes, it was annoying. However, I had children with a variety of disabilities, and we've never had an issue. We really need to give our kids some credit. Masks bother them much less than they bother us. Last year, when students were in the building, they found rows unable to work with their peers. Elementary teachers know that this is not the best practice. Children learn best when they can move about in the classroom and work with partners and in small, flexible groups. This year, because we are wearing masks, teachers are able to teach using these best practices, and students are engaging with and learning from each other. I believe this can only happen when they are masked. Unmasked, we would be forced to resort to students working by themselves in rows. This is not a teaching best practice. This is not a teaching best practice. Without masks, we also risk having to return to a fully remote model, as classes undoubtedly will be forced to contact tracing quarantine. This benefits no one, not the students, parents, or teachers, and is detrimental to the children's academic, social, and emotional development. This issue is not about choice. It is about ensuring the safety of Norton School's children, families, and staff. We want to wear masks so we can protect our children, teach effectively, and serve the common good. Thank you.
He's made a lot of noise. Hi, so I'm Joseph Muley, and I teach eighth grade and English at Norton School. So, I, I wanted to be here tonight because before, I lived in Northern, before our state introduced a mask mandate, my city may have had to make a decision about what to do. And I, I was very vocal there, and so was my wife, and so we both felt it was really important to be able to be here because we care about our students just like we care about our son. I have a lot of stuff, I've been doing a lot of reading, just like everyone has, and I have a lot of stuff, and I was trying to decide what stuff to kind of talk about tonight, but I, I think maybe it might just be better to like share some of the stuff that I have with you and just talk really quickly about, um, what different things. The first is, to me, like I basically understand this as being about layering mitigations, and this, I think that's exactly about what Amy said. If, if you're, if you're to people, and you're in a room, and it's poorly ventilated, and someone has COVID, right, the chances of that other person catching COVID are higher, right, and, and every mitigation strategy you add lowers that, right? So, if you're distanced, if you're washing their hands properly, if the room's properly ventilated, if the windows, if you move outside, all of those things help, disrupt, help to deter the spread. Masking is one of those tools. And so, we've learned so much from when we first started this, from when we closed. We learned about how the virus spreads on surfaces. We've learned about how it's transmitted. We've talked about spacing, and we're playing this, playing is the wrong word, we're making these careful calculations, I should say, about what is important, what are our top priorities, and how do we maintain safety? It's a priority for us to be open. So, other mitigations strategies need to be implemented, and they need to be layered. We know that student, that children are less impacted by the virus at school than adults are, as, but there's a percentage of the cases. As the cases rise, the percentage of children who are safe rise. Of course, my phone is locked, and that's a date on me too. But, but so far, it's now, after September 2nd, according to the American Family Statistics, 5 million children are tested positive for COVID since the onset of the pandemic. 252,000 cases were added in the past week, which is the largest number of child cases in a week since the pandemic began. With the Delta variant, which is more transmissible, we're seeing that cases. So, I agree with Amy that the most important thing for us to do is to keep our children in school. And I think the best way to do that is to maintain and layer the mitigation strategies. I don't like it. I don't want to be in a mask, I don't want my students in masks. But, to me, it feels like the best way for me to continue doing what I want to do and what I believe is in all of our interests, keeping the community safe, keeping them safe, keeping my colleagues safe, and maintaining the classroom environment where we can teach them. And I look forward to this, and I'll talk to the rest of the students who can teach at the Princeton School community as well. Thank you very much for your time.
Here on the medium, the hungry male doctor in the hall for a mask mandate. I'm out of masks, I'm working, I'm doing all my busy stuff, wearing my mask, keeping myself and others safe, and when I'm out of them, I'll go out on the train and bus, I'll wear my mask and I play by the rules, and I'm vaccinated and pleased. But, and this depends on about getting the people getting vaccinated and wearing a mask and, and this depends together. Thank you.
I swear, I always have to follow the hardest one. Hello, first off, I want to say thank you to Dr. Vieta, Mrs. O'Neill, Norton School producer, speaking to me here today. Oh, no, sorry, Nick Schleger for Norton West Street. Most importantly, Norton teachers and staff, as together, everyone has charted uncertain waters since March of 2021. My name is Nick Schleger. I've had the pleasure of calling Norton home for every minute of my life. I was a student at the JCS, the old school, I was the first seventh grade class, and then the new middle school, and eventually a 2004 graduate of Norton High School. I went on to receive a bachelor's degree in education in 2008 from then Bridgewater State College, a master's in 2011 from Enicon College, and currently in higher education at Bryan University in Smithfield, Rhode Island. I want to make it clear right from the beginning, I'm on technical school committee, with other superintendent, with other staff, Norton Public Schools. The decisions we have all had to make over the past 18 months, regardless of what career each of us are in, have been questioned, have been challenged, and sometimes quite frankly have resulted in strong disagreements. The one thing I can think of that we, that most of us can agree on, public schools are stronger when parents are involved, communication is open, and each decision that are made affecting our childrens are made with transparency and facts. Now, I'm not gonna stand here and give you all the medical scientific data about COVID-19. In the digital age, anyone who looked at medical journals clearly understands children are least affected to contract and transmit COVID-19. We all have different stories, different opinions, different feelings, and different experiences through all this pandemic. What you believe and what I believe at the end of the day truly doesn't matter. What we as a town, we need to work through those differences, we need to get it right, and we need to get it right now. All it takes is one word, and it's a hard word, it's called leadership. Massachusetts has always been a pretty grumpy great leader throughout American history. The Revolutionary War and the foundation of America was built in our own very backyard. The leadership qualities of Sam Adams, John Abigail Adams, John Handmark, Paul Revere, Ben Franklin, and Crispus Attucks has led us through the most uncertain times as a young country. Massachusetts was a home force man who was a major advocate for public education. Clara Barton, the founder of the American Red Cross. Dickus and Poe, Hawthorne and Emerson, and their abilities to make words come to life. Susan B. Anthony and her fight for women's equality. John F. Kennedy, his charisma, quick wit, and ability to connect with everyday people got elected our 35th president. To poor President Kennedy, we chose not to go to the moon in this decade and to do other things, not because they are easy, but because they are hard. Because that goal was, sorry, because that goal will serve to organize and measure the best of our energies and skills. Because that challenge is one we are willing to accept, we are unwilling to postpone, and one which we intend to win. It's time, it's time to return to our historical roots. It's time for the town of Norton to rise to the occasion. It's time for you to step up to the challenge before you, and choose, and not choose the easy path, but choose the difficult one. I understand Commissioner Riley covered the decision-making powers from local districts in late August. However, let's all remember one key detail in this policy. Whether or when a student should be disciplined for failure to wear a mask is a local decision guided by the district's students' discipline policy and particular facts. I'll read that one more time. Whether and when a student should be disciplined for the failure to wear a mask is a local decision guided by the district's students' discipline policy and particular facts. This is your chance, this is your chance to show up, this is your part to be a part of history, like those great citizens of Massachusetts before you. This is your chance to change the trajectory of the lives of Norton students and their families. This is your opportunity to finally say here in Norton, we believe, we believe in our wonderful principals and our teachers, we believe in the devoted parents to make the right medical decisions for their family, and most importantly, we believe in the future of our children, to watch them grow, as they will continue to lead the next future generations of Americans. I'm asking the school committee for two things. First one is easy, all the leaders of the town of Sandwich School Committee, send a letter from the Norton School Committee to Commissioner Riley, highlighting his epic failures, to cite any scientific reasoning and source of the mandates. And the second one is even easier. You make a motion to fully comply with Commissioner Riley's morbid elementary and secondary education mandates around masking our children, but you highlight one specific policy. Norton Public Schools will not use any disciplinary measures against students who fail to wear a mask. This simple policy will take the power from the hands of state bureaucrats and give it back to we, the people of Norton. Mrs. Cohen, Sherry, because I know you, you put it perfectly at the virtual August 27th meeting, and I paraphrase it here. We are not the enemy, we are parents just like you. We are trying to navigate through mandates, we're, which were taken out of our hands. We didn't have the ability to vote, the people do not know how we were going to vote. We are trying to work with our fellow parents in this town for the best of our children. We're a community that comes together in times like this. If the school committee believes in Mrs. Cohen's words, then let's act on it. We teach our children that actions speak louder than words. We encourage them to stand up for what they believe in, even if they are standing alone. Let's stand up as a town, stare as soon to be credits in the face, and put the powers back in the hands of the parents, to choose to follow the state mandate, or choose to defy the mandates in Norton Public Schools, or choose not to discipline any child for a failure to wear a mask. I thank you for your time, and I expect each of you to stand for your constitution and fight for apparent rights and rights in public schools. We need to check out the tool and be aware. Just asking you folks, we're at the big pitch, what's going on in our country right now? You can go to a restaurant, I ate at a supermarket the other day, I stood in line, people all around me talking, raining, no masks, crossing each other in the aisles, no masks. On the lunch thing, when I pour you in the sun, full of people, nobody wearing masks. On Sunday, there's going to be a event in Fort Worth, 70,000 people, no masks. Now, Brandon's outside, but your clubhouse will be a suit, hundreds of people breaking their little stream and having fun, no masks. Don't torture his little kids, it's killing them. This is more harmful than good. You people can go up there, it's, it's out of here, this is out of control. These people don't speak kids, that they abuse. These guys would damage to nothing good. These are respect, when blood comes out, when the street's feeling the foot, not the five-year-old kids be wearing for six hours at a time. Use common sense.
Hi, I didn't prepare a speech. I'd like to start this, first of all, publicly apologizing to Peter Wiggins.
Did you want to start with Peter Wiggins?
Joe, before, before our mystery, I don't know, my kids use school choice to you guys. I'd like to apologize to you, I had said some things in out of anger, I don't know if you've gotten my apology messages, but.
That's okay, girl.
I apologize, my real anger is directed towards a lot of you guys. And unfortunately, there's 10 workers, correct? How many?
Five.
Five.
The, the, is she, is she? Where is her problem?
She was unable to make it up, I believe she's trying to join us via Zoom, but she's not present. Do you have something specific for her?
Well, you know, I just, I find it a little funny, you know, all of us decided to come out here, we started going, you know.
Okay, so John, just stop you right there. And two things, first of all, I'm gonna tell you that this was not an easy thing to get together. We did it because we were not able to handle these comments on our last meeting. We couldn't get it done last week, this was the best we could do. So, if you're upset about somebody not being able to make it, while I respect that, remember that the first thing I said was, you'll be respectful with your statement, or not have to not become personal attacks. So, if you're here to make a personal attack, please take a moment, catch your emotions, and try to.
For all of the parents here who have tried to make something work with you guys, you either don't, you don't work with us, you don't even ask us what we want, and then you give us the excuse that everything is going well.
Can you say some examples of that, please?
Okay, sure. First of all, it was only four of you here instead of five. Second of all, every time I try to reach out to Dr. Vieta over there.
Sorry, that's not us, not working, can you listen to what we're saying, please?
You're not working with me, I'm not letting you talk. So, I'd like, I'd like to ask you.
You're making, you're making comments, you're making things, but you don't seem to have any examples, sir.
So, if you're gonna talk over me, I'm just gonna keep talking. Can, can you please tell me how many children since January 1st, 2020, to at least die in the end of August 2021 have died from COVID? As you guys make decisions, you also make based.
We have, we have.
Because you don't know the answer. Let me give you the answer, 361. 360, I'm not asking you to do, let me talk to you, if you can cut anyone else off. 361 children have died in almost 10 years, okay? You are more likely to be a child in the United States, happen to live in Chicago, and get shot by a stray bullet, than you are to die from COVID. And you guys are over here suffocating our kids, pulling them out of school, and when it comes down to it, you guys are the ones that are making the decisions.
Mr. Fordham, I am stopping you, and I am asking you to step back and take a seat, please. First of all, we have not done anything. We have not done anything, right? There is a mandate in place.
Last year, did you guys vote?
Second of all, with respect to your number of 361, you don't know how we feel about this, but I would ask you this, what is the okay number of deaths?
Out of 361, most of which had comorbidities and other issues.
What is the okay number of deaths, sir?
For a broken leg, it ended up getting infections and dying, but things still happened to also have COVID. Some of which collected at the hospital. So, I, I know you want to keep like.
My question still stands.
That, that number actually goes against my narrative.
My question still stands. What is the okay number of deaths?
The okay number of deaths? You already know the answer to that, that's a trick question.
No, it's, it's not.
No, it isn't your question.
It's not.
Do you know how many of the 18 people?
You don't think we are gonna make decisions about that all the time?
You don't seem to know any respect, you say you had to get back. I asked you yesterday if you guys actually shut down, stop doing the drills with the lockdowns, because I feel like.
Fine, Mr. Fordham, I'm gonna ask you again, I am gonna ask you again to take your seat. I started this by saying, you'll be respectful, we're not making personal attacks, these aren't attacks on us. And honestly, I have one positive, like, hey, here's an example of when that happened. All you're saying is.
You guys, okay, if you know about the proficiency.
So, please, sir, take a seat.
Less than 60% proficiency.
Officer, it's a piece of information from the media, it's something that.
This is a dead, this is a guy.
No, you want me to speak?
Yes.
Everybody else? It's not up to them, sir. It's not.
Sir, am I okay? Officer? So, you guys are already dying of silence, just like you silenced me off of Facebook for sharing the fact of 361 children, that's it. Then all the children who have died, nobody are gonna die of HIV.
I want to thank everybody for coming, if there's somebody else who wants to comment there. Listen, you can absolutely come here, listen, you can absolutely come here and speak your mind on this, but if you're gonna come up with baseless accusations at us, we're not gonna sit for them. And if, if, if somebody, Mr. Schleger, come down, sorry, second, none of you knows how we're gonna vote, and to come up here and tell us that this is how we're gonna vote, and you're angry at us, all you're doing is making us angrier about stuff.
How you vote, what people?
But you do, you do owe us, you do, you do got a lot of seats, and I, I, I agree.
Mr. Schleger, can you come back to the mic, please? And, and again, I will hear everybody who will speak respectfully and factually. If you're gonna throw baseless accusations, we're not gonna hear it, we just don't, we don't tie to it. There are people here with legitimate concerns and observations.
60% proficiency.
Nick Schleger, for example, too. I completely understand, but you are elected officials. I'm not saying people should be able to fire things at you, however, however, there does have to be, you gotta listen to the people, whether you agree or not. And I know you're in a tough spot, and I know it's not fair, because it is tough to stand up there, but if we just let them talk, give them his three minutes, put him on the, on the, on the little timer, and let him go, once his three months are over, get some answers.
Well, in fairness to him, I can't hold the three minutes, because I didn't hold the living over three minutes, see if they go.
Okay, so I'll take a vote.
And again, if he wants to come up and state his position on the mask, that's fine. If he wants to know, the school committee, that's not the forum, it's not the forum.
I understand that, but that's not for you to decide.
I respectfully disagree, this is a school committee open forum, it is for us to decide.
I understand that, but you're also gonna listen to your constituents in the town.
I, a hard official, Mr. Schleger, I, I could not agree with you more, in fact, I have constantly listened to you.
I'm not attacking, so I don't wanna, it is what it is, just let's go, let's get in three minutes up here, have everyone say, let's do three minutes, and then we move on. You gotta let them talk, you can't just sit there, no one wants to sit here and listen to a fake agreement.
I just want to say that this is not our full-time job, we don't get paid for this whatsoever. So, the fifth person that isn't here has a job on Wednesday nights, we're not even supposed to be here on a Wednesday night. Our, our meetings are on Thursday nights, and she is there 90% of them, as are the rest of us. So, the fact that she's not here means nothing. Because with five of us here, four of us can vote on anything we want to vote on. So, the fact that she's not here, she should not be attacked. She's working, providing for her family, and I don't want to hear anymore about how she's not here.
I agree. And again, I'm not attacking. But we also all have a right for our family. You gave us the open forum. There should have been five school committee members here. That is also fair for us as town citizens to ask our elected officials to be at meetings.
So I have, I wasn't even gonna speak today, but I just have a point to make.
All right, can I have you state your name and address first and get a little closer to you?
Doris Ayala. I have a, um, a 12th grade, thanks for my... So I come here trying to, you know, actually really not even prepared to say anything, but, you know, given the fact that everybody is pretty much given the time, I'm gonna take my time. So I have a high schooler. He's a junior here at Warren High School. I have two kids at the LG. I have a first grader, I have a third grader, and my junior. Throughout, um, my son's sports and wrestling and, and football, they, they were forced to wear the mask. During, you know, my, my youngest kids, they were forced to wear the masks. I am not against the masks 100%. Do I like them? No. Do I want them? No. I think that is up to the parents to decide. I have never heard, I have at least, me, my own personal opinion, I have not had anybody from the school committee reach out to me directly concerning my kids. My six-year-old, he had a very hard time last year when they had to wear the masks at school. He would come home, he was sweaty, getting off the bus. He now has like breathing issues. He's six years old. He's an athletic boy, just like my, uh, 11th grader. He's athletic. He's, you know, just never had any respiratory issues until last year, when it started. I'm over it. I'm over the mask being fine. For those of you who want to protect yourselves, protect their children, that's okay. I am not against that. But how about letting parents decide for their own children? How about, you know, you and I know that by doing this, you're including us because you're getting everybody's opinion, and, but I just think that the kids have had enough of it. You know, I just don't think that it's fair for them to be doing all of this stuff and, you know, have to wear a mask in their class. It is not healthy for them. I don't have papers and statistics to show you guys everything, but I'm sure you can do your research, as we have as parents as well. You know, just a concern, mother, advocating for my kids, I do not want them wearing the masks. How much longer is this gonna go on for? Honestly, how much longer is it gonna go on for? Does anybody know?
Well, I think we, we can semi-answer that, actually. Because the mandate is till October 1st or 4th. And if we have 80% vaccination rates, then we do get to this summer. So, so there is, there is a potential epidemic here.
Only if you get vaccinated.
Yeah, I, I, I know, but, but it's something, though, right?
No, why, I, my question, my, another question would be like, why in the email that I believe it was Dr. Vieta or whoever that, you know, was sent by, was basically a threat. I took it as a threat. If we don't have our kids vaccinated, or if they don't wear the masks, or, you know, they don't comply, then there's gonna be repercussions. What is that? They get punished, they get kicked out of school, or temporarily removed with a packet to do at home until they come back and decide to comply with the rules. Why? Why can we as parents not be the ones to decide medically for our own children? We should be entitled to that. Yeah, just, you know, it's my opinion. I'm advocating for my babies. They are not used to this. I don't care how many people say that the kids can get accustomed to this and can, you know, get used to it. Nobody will get used to it. Who actually sleeps with this on? Who actually goes to the grocery store and wears this downing? Honestly? Do you, do you, do you? You know?
People who are scared.
Right, so it's a fear mongering. That's what it is, and it needs to stop. The fear mongering needs to stop. It's not healthy for these kids. It's not healthy. Thank you for hearing me.
And I want to put back and say, I don't have any intention to, to discipline anybody for this. And, and this is not akin to what Mr. Tomas said earlier. The, the mandate is in place, and we cannot just flatly ignore it. However, I don't think there's any intention to discipline, suspension, banning from, from school activities, et cetera. That's not the intention here at all. And I will say to your question, if I can take a mask off legally, I do, every single time, so...
Hi, good evening. My name is Justine Callanan. I live at 97 Freeman Street. Um, I've been lucky enough to call this town home for over 35 years. I completed my early and secondary education through the Norton Public Schools. And now, as of tomorrow, I will be starting the journey through the same educational system as a parent of a preschooler. I wanted to speak before you tonight from both a parent and professional perspective. I've been a pediatric occupational therapist for almost 12 years, mostly working with children who have sensory processing challenges. In my professional life, I have always seen myself as a person to not get caught up in the details, to take a step back and look at the bigger picture. In light of our current times, I believe that's what we need to do here, take a look at the bigger picture. Sending my son to the Little Lancers program has been a decision my husband and I came upon with ease. I had full hope that he would be able to attend as any child would prior to the start of the pandemic, entering the classroom to see the smiling faces of his teachers and paraprofessionals, noticing his peers playing and smiling, or likely seeing a few peers upset as they recover from their initial first-day nerves. I know the teachers within the Little Lancers program are capable of creating a classroom environment that not only will feel secure, safe, and supported, but also warm and friendly, whether masks are worn or not. However, I strongly feel that the parents of these students should have the choice to send their children to school with or without wearing a mask to further facilitate comfort and ease as these students begin a new and sometimes scary endeavor. From a sensory processing standpoint, there are many students and people, adults too, who struggle with wearing a mask. The material may feel scratchy, the moisture created from talking and breathing in the mask may feel uncomfortable, the reduced air quality may have certain side effects, and the frustrations felt by both adults and children is not uncommon when it is difficult to hearing and understanding another person, or difficult to be understood and heard. At work, I talk a lot about filling up your sensory and emotional bucket so that a student or child can perform at their best. If their bucket is empty, then you are likely to see a decrease in frustration tolerance, increase in meltdowns and dysregulation, and trouble successfully attending and participating in the school or home daily routine. These discomforts caused by a mask are another stressor or bucket dipper that may exacerbate a child's anxiety, increase their distractibility and fidgeting, and significantly impact their ability to self-regulate. Children are resilient, and my son, like many kids, understands there are some places you have to wear a mask. He will put it on, wear it for the duration, in order to participate in that activity. Oftentimes, the mask ends up below his nose, he's constantly touching or even chewing on it, and that's clearly unsanitary, negating its effectiveness. The reality is, and I know some agree with me, I don't want him to think it's normal to not see someone's whole face. When babies are born, there is plenty of research to show the importance of children having interactions with people's faces, to see the smiling faces of their caregivers, have silly sounds and funny faces made at them by their siblings, and to mimic a smile shared with a loved one. The research shows this enhances a child's social and emotional development. In light of this recent topic, I did some research myself, and I found several articles to further support my point, which I did send to the school committee members. These research articles point out specifically for those students within the three-to-five-year range that masks reduce their ability to respond and identify to people's faces. The mask prevents children from fully interpreting a person's emotion, and more often than not, the student confused the correct emotion with other emotions when a mask was present. It has been shown that younger children rely on facial expressions to infer information on another's emotional state to a greater extent than the situational cues alone. The conclusion of the study reported that masks impacted a student's emotional intelligence and social competency. As I stated at the beginning, let's look at the bigger picture. There are vaccines available for those eligible and choose to receive it. There's home delivery for groceries and household items for those that feel more comfortable staying home and choose to avoid crowded public places. There are many virtual options, such as the Zoom for tonight's meeting, for those who choose to participate at home. And there's personal protective equipment also available for those who choose to wear it to further protect themselves. Allowing masks to be a preventive choice for students within the Little Lancers program is something we can do as a town to show, we see the research, we believe in the numbers, and we are going to put our children's emotional wellbeing first. It would be great to see if a school committee member would be willing to join my point, along with the several others who have spoken already, and make a motion to amend the current policy. As Desi's mask mandate is only for students within grades K through 12, and changing the policy to parental choice within the Little Lancers program continues to follow the state's guidelines of recommending not requiring masks for those under five years old. This year's theme at the JCS is "All Together Now", so let's be all together and move towards normalcy, where our emotions are not hidden and give our youngest learners a chance to be fully present as they embark on their educational journey. Thank you for your time.
I am Tiffany Nutty. Um, I'm actually a school choice mom. And, um, at the start of the pandemic, I was working at a nursing home. So I know how bad this was. I was there. I had many residents of mine die while I was holding hands with them. No loved ones. I get it. But now, I'm, my daughter, she's in the middle school now. All last year, coming home from school, massive headaches. And Ms. Weber, you know my daughter, Ellie. She never complained about anything. First day of school, I picked her up yesterday. She has a migraine. She's ready to throw up. Nothing over the summer. Nothing until it started again. Okay? And I'm sorry. When the teachers say they're looking for the welfare of our kids, that's not their job. Their job is to educate our kids. And we decide their well-being and their safety, and I take responsibility for that. I'm not taking responsibility for anybody else's child, but I can take it for my own. And I'm asking you to fight for our kids and the parents who elected you. Try, do something to change this. Because I do not want to pull my daughter out of school. She's... The issues she has now because of all of this. And then you want me to vaccinate her so she can take her mask off? You want her to, because I'm not letting her get vaccinated. What do we know this is gonna do to her in the future? We don't know anything. So you want me to experiment on my 12-year-old child just so she can take her darn mask off? That's wrong. And I need you guys to fight for my child, because what else can I do?
I do want to say very quickly that I don't think anybody up here is saying there were permitted vaccinations, and quite frankly, I'm indifferent whether you're vaccinated or not. It's, it's your call. I 100% agree with you. You make the call on that, not me.
Um, good evening, Kelly Gallagher, 201 B room. I want to first thank you for allowing the public, who wanted three minutes to speak. I really appreciate that. Um, I do want to express my disappointment with this topic being taken off last meeting's agenda and pushed back until after the school year began. Although Desi's decision was last minute, they hold no authority over the preschoolers. And I would have hoped that the school committee would have been willing to spend their summer nights engaging in a topic that directly affects the health, safety, and welfare of our youngest students, and one that is near and dear to the hearts of thousands in this district. One of the reasons I'm here before you is to advocate for parental choice regarding masking our preschoolers. It is unlikely any peer-reviewed, unbiased, scientific data I present will change the minds of those who believe a piece of cloth is going to slow or stop the spread of viral particles. Even though it says so right in the box, it can do no such thing. So let's put the efficacy debate aside for the time being. Let's instead focus on some other facts. Desi holds no authority over the preschoolers in this district. Therefore, the most recent mask mandate announced by Desi only involves grades K through 12. The Department of Early Education and Care is who oversees children enrolled in preschools. One week ago, they released an updated mask policy stating children aged 2 through 4 are not required to wear masks. This policy states these children should be encouraged to wear masks at family discretion. Furthermore, the current Massachusetts Department of Public Health's face covering order states children under five years old are exempt from the face covering requirements. This district's mandate not only conflicts with state policy, but it limits the ability of our little ones to communicate in many significant ways. We all know that non-verbal communication is fundamental, fundamental to human speech. Young children especially are developing their communication skills and are just now learning what these non-verbal cues are. We know that most communication is not really the words, but the gestures, the smile, the frown, the facial expressions. They are fundamental. Requiring young children to be masked all day and their teachers to be masked prevents basic communication from developing between children and between children and their teachers. They impede the ability to learn to communicate. They actually block much communication. They hide expression. They hide the ability to form friendships and associations. We all know how difficult it is to relate to another adult when our faces are masked. One doesn't know, is there a smile behind there? Is there reception to conversation? The normal cues we need are lost, and when, when children are masked all day. These are not only violations of fundamental liberty rights of children, but there's not even a rational basis for them. Children are not known to be susceptible in any real way to COVID. According to Johns Hopkins, children have a statistical case fatality rate of zero, and all adults who wanted to be vaccinated have been. Last year, the positivity rate of pooled surveillance testing in Massachusetts schools was .76%. Let me say that again, .76%. There's simply no need for this harsh and frankly draconian measures to be used within our preschool classrooms. These children do not know how to wear masks properly. The majority of the adult population doesn't know how to wear them properly. At the various open houses last week, I saw numerous parents and teachers constantly touching their masks, and some even pulled them down to talk to each other. These young children cross-contaminate frequently. Dr. Emily Oster at Brown University has been tracking the rates of in-school COVID cases since the pandemic began, which includes data from Massachusetts. And she has consistently found that schools with mask mandates have higher rates of COVID than schools who allow masking to be optional, no matter the level of community infection rate. Other studies have shown these masks can harbor all manner of things, including antibiotic-resistant bacteria, and our little ones are sucking on them all day long. Back in May, all pools and restaurants, bars, theaters, stadiums, in all public places outside of mass transit and health facilities were lifted. Literally, dozens of people can now crowd at a bar. Hundreds of people can be in a restaurant or the supermarket. Thousands can be in, can be in a stadium, sitting next to each other in closed quarters. But for some reason, schoolchildren, the population that suffers the least from this virus, must be masked. We don't limit the federal constitutional rights of almost 1 million schoolchildren in this state simply to protect a very small number of adults in school. And since we've allowed vast contact in all areas of life beginning May, no reason can exist for continuing such rules on these children. I am not advocating to remove the rights of parents who want to mask their children. I am advocating for every parent in this district to have the ability to make that decision themselves. Section JLC of the Norton School Committee Policy states, "The district recognizes that parents and guardians have the primary responsibility for the health of their students." I am asking you to implement the... I am asking you to implement the EEC and the DPH's guidance and to update the face mask policy to recommend at family discretion for our preschool children. If before DESI's announcement you were planning on voting to recommend and not require masks for all students, then I am asking you to vote tomorrow night to lift the mask requirement for our preschoolers. Thank you.
And I want to address very quickly the timing of this forum. That is on me. I apologize for your disappointment. Originally, we had had a meeting scheduled, as you know. As you stated, DESI kind of came up at the last minute. Mandate, I took it off of the agenda. By law, I have to have it on the agenda 48 hours beforehand before I realized we could not get a meeting the following week. It was too late, so that is unfortunately on my part. I apologize for that. It was not intending to not get any heard before school. Unfortunately, things just didn't work out for us. As you can see, sometimes physically, we can't all get there, and that was all this meeting except I think we all wanted to be around for, and it just didn't work out. So I apologize for that. Do we have any other comments?
Hi there. Gina Armitidis, 207 Bay Road. First off, I would like to thank you for having us here tonight and all you do for our schools and community. As many of you may know, I am a mom of two school-aged children and an educator. It has been a great start to the school year. However, I'm deeply concerned about the mask mandate. Just a few days into the school year, I've heard many students voice concerns about not being able to breathe. Just a few quotes. "I can't breathe." "I need air." "It's hard to breathe." "I need these masks. It's impossible to breathe." One student said she was too afraid and nervous to tell her teacher that she was having a hard time breathing. She did not want to upset her teacher or do anything that would make her mad. She thought her teacher would be upset and she would get in trouble. I encourage students to sit and take a few extra sips of water. It breaks my heart to see students struggling and having a hard time breathing in a mask, as many of us do throughout the day. I know I need multiple mask breaks throughout the day. I get overhead heated, lightheaded, sweaty, and sleepy when I wear one. I require multiple mask breaks throughout the day. I think we all do. Just remember that the school buildings are very, very hot and have no AC. On these hot days, I leave literally soaking wet. I know of two elementary schools, or maybe more, in Norton where students are sitting across from each other during lunch and right next to each other. Does this make any sense? They can be in close contact during lunch, but must be masked at their desks. Please allow increased mask breaks. Please amend the face mask policy to remove the discipline piece and let them breathe. Thank you.
Hi. My name is Andrea Salzello, and I live at 480 Lane. I would like to start by saying that I appreciate all the work this committee has done over the past 18 months. None of you signed up for this position expecting to be thrown into the midst of pandemic, so I thank you for your efforts during these chaotic times. I understand that the mask mandate being imposed on schools is something that was decided at a state level, so I am not here to argue for or against, as I know that that is not a policy that can be changed by this committee at this time. I do, however, feel that it is extremely important for the committee to review what is currently in your control, and that is the disciplinary protocol around mask use. I am a healthcare provider. I have been for 20 years, so I fully understand the purpose and procedure for proper PPE usage. If I somewhat just touch my mask, I must wash my hands. If I sneeze, I must dispose of my soiled mask, wash my hands, and apply a new clean mask. Otherwise, I am not following proper infection control measures, and my facility could be flagged by the Department of Health. Asking children to utilize masks in the way that they were truly designed to be used is impractical, disruptive, and almost always unsanitary. Many adults are unable to adhere to proper hygienic mask use. To expect our children to do so is unrealistic. While I strongly disagree with the blanket mask mandate for schools, I understand that this is a policy for this moment in time. I have educated my children in the best and proper use of masks while also teaching them what limitations they have when used improperly, as is the case most often in the school setting. I have instructed my children to take short mask breaks at their discretion, whenever and wherever they feel the need to properly breathe. I have instructed them that they do not need to wait for an arbitrary time to mask break to be able to lower their masks in their classroom for a few moments. My concern for them is having teachers and other staff single them out to remind them to lift the mask or pull their mask back up. Teachers need to be able to focus solely on teaching their students this school year. They do not need to be wasting their time or the students' time by policing for proper mask use. My ask for this evening is for the committee to reconsider the verbiage of what discipline can be taken against students around improper mask use. I will not send my child to school without a mask, as that is the current mandate. However, I will not have my child singled out for taking a break from their mask as they see fit. I do not want my child to feel stressed or anxious that they will be disciplined by their teacher or school staff by needing to take a moment to breathe briefly. Thank you very much for your time.
Josh Heier, 101 North Drive. I do appreciate you guys giving us the opportunity to talk and speak tonight. I do respect and understand how difficult a position everyone is in. That being said, I understand that, you know, it is a choice for a discipline or no discipline. And I feel that there should be no discipline involved when it comes to a child or a parent's decision for a child not to wear a mask. I can cite as much as everybody else has cited here, facts, laws, statistics. I think everyone's said it probably better than I could have. But again, I just, I feel there should be no discipline involved when it comes to masks. My other major concern is this whole, well, when you reach 8% vaccinated status, the vaccinated students can take the mask off and the unvaccinated students cannot take the mask off. Essentially, you're creating two classes of citizens here, and that's not okay. Not only that, but you're also essentially telling everybody what your medical status is, which, again, is not okay. It's, everyone's right to keep their medical information confidential, and I believe that's the case, too. I witnessed myself, my child was teased last year, you know, by other students saying he was anti-vax or anti-mask. And that's my fear is we're going to get to that point where, you know, we're going to have students against students, which is not okay. Because of either A, parents' views on things, which we all know we sometimes pass on to our children, you know, because we try to raise our children to what we believe is right and what is wrong. So again, that's my major fear when this whole mandate changes in October to this whole, if you have 80% or whatever vaccinated status. Again, what reassurances can the schools give us that that's just not going to happen? You can say it all you want, but I know it's going to happen, and I think you all know it's going to happen. Like I said, I appreciate your time. I do appreciate all the teachers and principals and administrators. You know, you guys do hard work, and, you know, we do appreciate what you guys do. I know that firsthand, so. Again, I'm just asking you guys to definitely consider removing discipline from the equation. So I would also like the opportunity to hear what Dr. Vaevas has to say with regards to his quote, "What common good," under what the discipline he sent out. I just, my concern with that is you're going down kind of a slippery slope. Because as a person, as a bachelor of history, we've seen many uses of common good for very wrong reasons. And I'm not saying Dr. Vaevas is going down that road, but, you know, it only takes one step to start moving down that path, and I don't want to see that. I'm not trying to attack you personally, Dr. Vaevas.
Thank you. First of all, I think in most instances tonight, thank you to the opposing viewpoints that are in the room and the professionalism that I've seen that, as many of you know, has not happened in a lot of other communities. In direct commentary to the question, in every piece of information that I afforded to the school committee, and in some cases, to you in the audience, it has gone through the North Public Schools attorney. It has not been Joe Vaevas sitting in a room interpreting A, B, and C. It's been sent to legal counsel, through our legal counsel for the school district to provide information. And I'll give you some examples of that, because there were general questions that were sent out by a number of leaders in the school committee, and thank you for ceasing me on it as well. And so as I've done in a couple of other situations for the school committee, I have sent out those questions to the school committee. And I'll give you an example, and I'm happy to post this out for anyone to have its public record anyways. So I may, Mr. Chairman. So in one of the questions that was asked concerning the discipline, I'm just reading verbatim by taking the question that was asked through the emails that came in and sending them forward. The commissioner's August 25, 21 memorandum, taken as a whole, basically that districts are required to implement the mask mandate. We do not interpret the language cited by the writer of the email to mean that the commissioner is permitting districts to excuse students from compliance. We are of the opinion that, so that's what the school committee receives, in context of the memorandum as a whole, the cited language is clearly meant to convey that discipline is a measure that may be considered among other available measures in game compliance. But the commissioner is recommending that discipline be a last resort after other attempts at game compliance have not succeeded. With that in mind, districts may elect to use student discipline after attempting other alternative measures, which may include and are not limited to a meeting with the student to encourage compliance, meeting with the parent to encourage compliance, and distancing the non-compliant student from the other members of the student body to complete work such as relocation, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Number of times tonight, there's been a number of comments made as it pertains to the decisions that are being made, in this case by the commissioner, taking out the local control, which he has done until roughly, we're hearing, October 1st. The 80% rule is not a North School Committee rule. That was a direct quote from the commissioner's office to UMass DPH and DESI. That's, again, not a local number that's been cited. I am very clear to the previous speaker that I have significant concerns about 80% and what could potentially happen in this school as a former principal and as a parent of a child who goes to North High School. The singular issue that I take up is that the decision that the school committee has to make, or decisions that are then given to me to me, are based on the definition of, quote, "my definition of common good." My Little Lancers preschools has a significant number of students with behavioral and significant medical conditions. I am currently working with a family on an alternative route at an elevated rate to be able to provide them support. The research that, and I'm sorry if I can't see him, that one of our colleagues, one of your folks out there has commented that I've met with him privately and we've gone back and forth, both sides are getting research pro/anti. And to be quite honest, people like me are overwhelmed with it and what road to go, and these folks are as well. The decisions that I try to recommend to the school committee are grounded on 2,400 students and the safety and concern that is solely the job of the superintendents of school. The number one requirement that I have is your children, one of them is my child, who I choose to send here, Ra-Ra, my friend, who also sends her child here, personal choice, we, I think, made a good decision. And then lastly, the 400 people who work for me. That's how I make my decisions. That's how passionate I am and the time that I take personally to get involved. Listen, I know this is hard. There is no one that doesn't want to, I don't think there's anyone in this room wants to wear a mask. I can assure you of that. I have a significant autoimmune disease. I met with my doctor. My doctor highly recommended, right around the second opportunity, that I take it. Not necessarily knowing what I was taking, but I also take medications currently and have been on it for 22 years that has a 2.5% chance that I'm going to die from cancer someday. But myself and my medical doctor decided to have a conversation that was in my best interest, and we put that decision to side. That's a person's word, that's me. When I make a decision, I'm giving an example today, I received an email that differs from a prior speaker as it pertains to the preschool. Specifically, sorry, specifically, they have a child with a concern of being in a situation where... I didn't even need to speak that much, the mic's gone already. Test, sorry. And that parent has exactly the totally different opinion from the opinion that was just provided here. This is a 50-50 fraction decision. Every decision, every email response that I made to some of you, every meetings that I've had with at least three of you, has been utilizing advice from counsel to you folks, and some of it, as I shared earlier, not even my own personal belief. Because that's the role that I'm in. I have to provide as much of information as I can, and then they have to make a decision. I know for a fact, and I don't want to speak out of hand, that local decisions by local school committees may not have actually agreed with the commissioner. I know that for a fact, not only in the community that I work in, but in the community that I live in and nearby communities. We had a local community that took a vote, and that vote was taken away from them. Right? I mean, days later. Our number one argument all along as superintendents throughout the state, and I won't speak for my colleagues, but I'll just speak for myself, has been the timing of this and getting information to us to make a decision just hasn't been enough, over and over and over again, over and over again. Lastly, according to DESI and DPH's protocols, which I have shared with families, maybe the number one reason for the masking is simply the whole context of contact tracing. Again, not Joe Vaevas' decision, but those protocols that are in place are the ones that we are being asked, not being asked, we're being told to follow. So if a student's in a classroom and they're not masked, and there's a situation, then those children are now home. We're trying to aggressively pursue allowing for you to give us the right to test students for the test. Again, that's a parental decision. If a parent doesn't want to, then it's going to fall back to not my protocol, but the protocol that we were told we have to follow. Now, the chairman and I had a sidebar probably weeks ago on this topic, and I'll put something out there that most people probably wouldn't. Somewhere, somewhere, somebody needs to make a legal challenge. Somebody, somewhere, needs to make a legal challenge and let the courts decide, are there parental rights on these? Is it a medical device? And so on, and so on, and so on. Because at the local level, it's just going to be folks going back and forth and taking the lead, unfortunately or fortunately, depending on your side that you're on front, DESI or DPH or whatever, quote, significant... depending on your side that you're on, from DESI or DPH or whatever, quote, significant leader, i.e., we haven't taken up, no, I foresee us in the future ever taking up any concept of mandating vaccinations. I don't know what the committee thinks, but I'm pretty assured that that is not how this committee thinks in terms of mandating vaccines. But who knows where this vaccine vaccination requirement's going to come from? We're already seeing at the state level, 43,000 state employees, we got people walking up that are saying they're going to walk off the job. They're looking for other jobs. Now, that's not me, but at the end of the day, for process sake, so that you know, these types of situations are provided through the school committee to legal counsel, back to the school committee. They get all their responses. That's the process. I've shared some of those responses with you when you've asked for them. I'm happy to share them with anyone who asks. It's public record and information anytime I send out those types of questions to counsel. And then lastly, if you do have a specific situation, and I'm not going to pinpoint, because a number of you have mentioned a concern that your child is X, Y, Z since they've been wearing masks. The easiest thing to resolve that issue, your child not wearing masks, you know, is to see your medical doctor. I just got a medical vote today from a parent who, X, Y, Z, child's not going to be wearing a mask as of tomorrow in school. Those are the protocols that they've put in place. Those haven't been my protocols that I put in place. And then I think the last part is, no one in the Commonwealth is really, really sure about this October 1 situation. And I'm just being truthful, we just don't know what that rule really means. We just don't, and that's not, you know, feel free to call someone else for that opinion if you'd like. We just don't know. I mean, it's a vote that was taken to provide the Commissioner, who then said, and oh, by the way, October 1st, if and around, and then the 80% rule was tossed in there as well. By the way, trying to collect, with all due respect to any of you who believe in vaccination, don't want to vaccinate, whatever, trying to collect that information is a numerical, almost impossibility to try to do. Besides, straightforward to saying, is your child vaccinated? Asking the teacher or staff member, are you vaccinated? Yes, no, and then collecting those numbers and then saying, is that 80% of the building? Just doesn't seem to me to be the right protocol. That's me. Maybe on that issue, we agree 100%, but the fact of the matter is, I wanted you to know the process that I'm trying to utilize in getting decisions to the committee in the best interest that they have to make when they are provided. So tomorrow night, as an example, if I may, Mr. Chairman, to finish, tomorrow night, they have a vote to Ms. Gallagher's comment and others that they can decide to accept the recommendation not requirement. By the way, that recommendation not requirement, I would argue, doesn't say parental rights. It just says recommendation not requirement. However, when you look, when you look at it, the domain of it is, they can say that preschoolers may utilize it, may not. That vote does not impact the staff. The staff is still under the policy of being a staff. That could be a vote that they choose to take. They could stay with the current policy that they have in place. They could go with the current policy and put a different deadline on it and come back and revisit to say, is there any situations that are happening within our preschool that would require us to relook at this option that's been provided? So those are all the options that are potentially in place for the school committee to consider tomorrow night. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Is it okay if I speak again? I thank you for your patience and long suffering and everything, really. I just want to make a couple of things, a couple of points. Number one, I'm not sure from the language that I've heard back from the board, that you consider exclusion from in-person learning as discipline. So as a parent, and I'm sure that many of us would say the same, excluding a child from in-person learning is discipline. You might call it, some people might call it something else, but that's just, you know, whatever they call, whatever they say, it's just a rose, you know, whatever. It's discipline. Excluding someone from in-person learning, you know, selecting them out, that is a step of discipline. There's just inarguable in my mind, and I think it could be in anybody's. Second, I would say, I'm trying to get you, or my goal is to try to get you to look in different directions. We're, right, you're a representative body. We elected you, okay? I voted for you guys, okay? And so I voted you to represent me, and we voted for you to represent us. But what we see here, the problem that we have, is you are not representing us. You are representing DESI to us, but not us to DESI. And so, that's, all the language, and I don't want to get into a nitpick, but I have to say, the language that Dr. Vayez just read that came back from the lawyer, I did not hear the word "shall" one time. I heard "may." It's all, none of it is command language. None of what the lawyer wrote was command language in it. We know "shall" means in legal terms, it's got to get done. And none of what he wrote, he read from the lawyer, was that kind of language. It was all "may consider, might do this." It was all potential. And again, so I'm asking, hey, like I said, I don't believe this is an all or nothing thing. Dr. Vayez said it was a 50/50 split. I think that's the issue. So let's be the United States of America where we are free, we have right of consent and right to deny consent. And if it is such a 50/50 thing, as we all admit, then let us be 50/50. Those who choose to wear, wear. Those who choose to not, don't. So we're not forcing you to do it. And I don't, I mean, this is just, you know, it's my perspective, it's perspective of a lot of people in our town. And I guess the last thing is, you know, I don't see how the phrase "whether or when," you know, I don't want to be, I didn't come here to be lawyerly, but whether or when a student is disciplined, in any understanding of the English language, whether means you may do it or you may not do it. It's up to you. So I have legal counsel tell me that they put the liability on you, that DESI did that. They made the mandate, but they essentially said enforcement is at the local level, so as to keep their hands clean. And we're just asking, hey, represent us. Let's come up with something. I mean, man, when I was, you know, we don't do this anymore, but when I got in trouble in high school, I had to staff for school and pick up trash off the campus for five minutes. Hey, if my kid doesn't want to wear a mask, then I'm fine with him staying after school picking up trash for five minutes. I'm just tongue in cheek there, but that's what I think, that's what I'm asking. I would ask you, one of you, to make that. I don't know if it's up, if possible to make a motion to get rid of this disciplinary step, or severely amend it to, yeah, comply, but also to represent the people of Northern Massachusetts, their parents and children. Okay? Thank you.
Ms. Gallagher, before you go, after Ms. Gallagher, I'm going to open it up to any comments or questions we have on the line.
Dr. Vayez, I just want to make a quick correction. You had mentioned that the Department of EEC's recent policy did not mention at family discretion, right? Can email this to you later, but have a copy of the policy?
It says at family discretion, that's the policy. You are correct. It says at family discretion, my comment. I didn't clarify I was going to.
Okay, we're on the same page, thank you. And then also, your comment about, you know, your doctor is there for medical exemption. I have been contacted by several whistleblowers who work in doctors' offices across the state. They have told me that they are being told and threatened by the state of Massachusetts that if they write medical exemptions, they're going to pull the doctor's licenses. So I want to put that on the record. Over the summer, DESI announced there would be no statewide mask mandate, and that such a decision would be made by individual school districts. Parents came out in droves across the state and advocated for parental choice. Many school committees voted to recommend and not require face coverings for all students. We're disappointed that you did not reach out to the parents in this community and ask for their input and survey them on how they felt about this issue. Lastly, you surveyed parents about the type of return to school option you preferred, and you should have reached out to us to ask us about masking about our choices. In a political paragraph two weeks before the school year began, Commissioner Riley announced he wanted to mask all K through 12 children again. The Board of Education voted to give the Commissioner the authority to mask our children. This school committee has essentially washed their hands of the situation. You are stating that the authority over this decision was taken back by the state. However, this is not entirely true, as you heard two weeks. In the implementation of mask mandate document, excuse me, document released by DESI, they specifically state, as you heard, whether and when a student should be disciplined for failure to wear a mask is a local decision. Therefore, we are asking this committee to amend its face mask policy to remove the language stating students will face discipline over this issue. Now, you're probably asking yourselves, why should we do such a thing? Well, excuse me, because right now, your policy disciplines students if they fail to partake in an action that is illegal, unscientific, coercive, harmful, and usurps parental rights. You need to note that neither the Commissioner of Education nor the Board of Education has legal authority to implement public health policies. The Board's authority, which is found in General Law, Chapter 69, Section 1B, states, "The Board shall establish policies relative to the education of students in public early childhood, elementary, secondary, and vocational technical schools." Now, General Law, Chapter 69, Section 1B, does state, "The Board shall establish standards to ensure that every student shall attend classes in a safe environment." However, when read in the context of the full paragraph, it is clear it only applies to the structural environment of the school buildings. Therefore, 603 CMR 27, which is the regulation used by DESI to implement the most recent face covering requirement, holds no statutory authority as it relies on General Law, Chapter 69, Section 1B. This is signed. This CMR requires exigent circumstances, which do not currently exist. There have been zero pediatric deaths in the state of Massachusetts. The DPH ceased reporting of pediatric hospitalizations on June 30th, and the state announced they will no longer be tracking in-school COVID cases this year. So where is DESI getting the information for which they are using to make this decision? This mask mandate also violates another DESI CMR. 603 CMR 18.058A states, "The school shall not conduct research or experimentation without prior written notification to and the prior written specific consent of the affected student's parent. While it may not have been your intent to conduct research or experimentation, the procedures and requirements you specify in your face masks policy and student handbook are by their nature experimental. Face coverings have an EUA designation from the FDA. This EUA designation is for products of investigational or experimental nature. The FDA has only issued EUAs for face coverings, not all approvals of safety, accuracy, or efficacy. There are no randomized control studies or mixed correlational evidence to show that masks are beneficial." To date, neither the CDC, nor the National Institutes of Health, nor the National Institute of Allergy and Infectious Diseases have conducted a study on the physical, psychological, or developmental effects of mask wearing by children in schools. The NIH has a $42 billion budget, and they spent 2% of that on COVID research, and they have not spent a single penny, not a single penny, on studying the effects of masking our children in schools. This is all one big experiment, and you don't have the authority to conduct experiment without our written consent. As mentioned, face coverings are an EUA product. The federal law granting the FDA the power to authorize a medical product for emergency use requires the person being administered the product be advised of his or her right to refuse administration of the product. This law further recognizes this well-sell doctrine that medical experiments or clinical research may not be performed on human subjects without the express informed consent of the individual receiving treatment. Therefore, by requiring these medical devices on our children, you need to obtain informed consent. According to the FDA, informed consent is that you need to provide the understanding and nature for the procedure or device, understand the risks and benefits, offer reasonable alternatives, and understand the risks and benefits of all these alternatives. It also states that consent cannot be obtained under coercion, meaning no undue influence, punishment, or reward. Correct me if I'm wrong, but we have not received any documentation from this district that provides us with the benefits, the risks, or the side effects of a child wearing a mask for seven to eight hours a day. We have not received an offer of other options, nor have we received anything asking for our permission for this district to apply a medical device on our children. Not only that, but I think saying that a child will not be able to attend in-person school and not receive a free and appropriate in-person education is a form of coercion. So basically, this district has not met the criteria for informed consent at all. Because you have not provided us with the risks and benefits of mask wearing, we have to conduct our own research. We have found an abundance of peer-reviewed studies from prestigious medical journals and the NIH demonstrating these masks do not prevent the spread of viruses, and that long-term mask wearing can have negative effects and consequences. So is this district willing to take on the liability for any adverse effects on our children's health? We know this recent mandate is not based in data, science, common sense, or basic human decency, because the Commissioner and Lieutenant Governor told us so. The Commissioner admitted in his August 20 press release, "The face covering requirement is an arbitrary decision used only as coercion to encourage vaccination." End quote. "The purpose of the mask policy is to encourage higher vaccination rates among students." End quote. In addition, Lieutenant Governor Palito stated, "We hope that by instituting vaccine benchmarks among children populations, excuse me, among school populations, we will create a real incentive for students and staff to get vaccinated so they can remove their masks." This statement implicitly acknowledges that masks are a chronic burden to students. We know that COVID poses almost no risk to our children at all. 4.2 million children have tested positive for COVID. A total of 0.008% of them have died. Overall, 0.0004% of the child population in this country has died of COVID. The CDC estimates that 480 children died from the flu in the six-month 2018-2019 flu season. That's, excuse me, that's more than have died from COVID these past 18 months. Did anyone in this room suggest at any point that year that kids wear masks for flu, which again, is more dangerous to kids than COVID? These policy decisions are being driven by political science, not actual science. The Chief of Pediatric Infectious Diseases at TOPS stated, "I think the American Academy of Pediatrics is virtue signaling. I strongly disagree with the recommendation that all children two years and above need to wear a mask. I think people like to say they're basing their decisions on science, but they're not. They're basing their recommendations on emotion." Steven Petty, a certified industrial hygienist and known as the top expert in his field, testified recently, "Masks cannot filter the small stuff because COVID particles are comprised of aerosols. It is really, really, really small stuff. Masks leak. They do not filter out the small stuff, cannot be sealed, are commonly worn by persons with facial hair, and may be contaminated due to repetitive use and the manner of use." He emphatically stated that mask wearing provides no benefit whatsoever either to the wearer or others. The largest study of the use of medical and cloth masks back in 2015, comparing two-layered cotton cloth masks to medical masks, showed a 13x higher risk of infection in the cloth masks, and it concluded penetration of cloth masks by particles was almost 97%. A large-scale survey of more than 25,000 children conducted in Germany found the overwhelming majority of children reported adverse effects from wearing majority of children reported adverse effects from wearing face masks, including excessive CO2 in the bloodstream. A meta-analysis regarding face masks and their effects on pandemic influenza currently published on the CDC website states, "Our systematic review found no significant effect of face masks on transmission of laboratory-infirmed influenza." Do any of you know what sort of psychological damage we do to children by forcing them to cover their faces? Teaching them that the air is toxic, that everyone around them is sick, depriving them of the ability to see each other's faces? Teaching them movie theaters, trampoline parks, restaurants are all safe places, but school is not? Do you know what kind of damage that does? Have you wondered about the health effects of forcing children to breathe through sweat, spit, and dirt-soaked rats every single day? Do you know what the effect is on children mentally if they're unable to read each other's facial cues? What does it do to a child's developing immune system if they have to wear masks all day, every day? Has this district taken any of this into consideration at all? Or are you satisfied to place this burden on children anyway? But why? It's not to keep them safe. They are safe. It's not to keep the adults safe. They can all get vaccinated if they want to. It's to make certain people feel better and to protect themselves politically. We were asked to shut down our lives for 15 days to slow the spread, so hospitals could gather the necessary supplies and equipment, and to prevent them from being overwhelmed. We are now 18 months into this game. We've sacrificed our jobs, our livelihoods, and our children's happiness for the greater good. We're done. When they flatten the curve, try to flatten the case count zero. We see people supporting ill-informed data and saying that children are resilient, they'll be okay. They say the only people they see complaining are crazy parents and not the kids. Our children are young, and it is our job as their parents to advocate for them. If the data showed face coverings prevented viral transmission, did not cause negative side effects, and that COVID is a real threat to our children, I would not be here before you tonight. But it doesn't show that. It shows the exact opposite. What is also troubling is that DESI has tied this mask mandate to some arbitrary number of 80% vaccination rate. Even if the vaccination rates within the schools reach 80%, they want the unvaccinated still be masked. This means children would be able to determine each other's private medical information with just one glance. And that is wrong on so many levels. Children can come to school with HIV or hepatitis. That is protected information, and they are not allowed to be treated any differently. Yet, we would have a visual differentiator between vaccinated and unvaccinated children. What about our littlest children not eligible for a vaccine? Where is their offer? That is differential treatment of our children based on medical status. That is medical segregation. We implore you, please stand up for our children and not allow this to happen. It has been one year since the beginning of the last school year, and there is no longer any excuse to mask our children again. We know better now, and when we know better, we do better. DESI themselves have told other town attorneys, "No disciplinary action should be taken by school districts." The CDC's on-COVID handbook states, "No disciplinary action should be taken for students who do not bring a mask to school." The North School Committee Policy states, "The district recognizes that parents and guardians have the primary responsibility for the health of their students," and it also states, "The committee will not relinquish any of this authority since it believes its decision-making control over the children's learning should be in the hands of local citizens as much as possible." We're asking you to listen to the parents of the children in this community that you represent. These are our children, and masking them should have, should have been, and should always be our decision. We are asking you to follow the recent DESI guidance by exercising the authority they have recognized you have. For all the reasons you have heard tonight and previously, we are asking you to remove the discipline language from the face mask policy. Please remember that it is a parent's right to choose what is best for their children. Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna go to Zoom, I believe, Matt.
At this time, we don't have anyone raising their hand. There was someone earlier. They have since left. There are, hold on, we do have somebody. I'm going to move them. So there were some comments in response to the audience here tonight, but there is one question that has come up. Aside from how we feel about masks, what about mask breaks? My children should not have to leave their classroom to take a mask break? At the middle school, how will actual scheduled mask breaks be handled across the board so that all students have two to three times besides lunch they can remove their masks without missing class time? My children report mask breaks are not offered. I request that this be addressed. And that's pretty much all, unless anyone wants to raise their hands and I can allow them to speak.
Gentlemen, to be honest with you, with the speakers turning out, I really can't hear what you're saying, so.
I'm sorry?
I'm gonna go.
The question regarding mask breaks and making sure that all students are having the ability to access mask breaks throughout the course of the day. Yes, I agree.
Firstly, tomorrow morning, I'll contact the middle school principal to ask for a reference check on middle school teachers providing for mask breaks. Again, I'll ask the administration to review it, to take a look at it, and to make sure that the teachers are doing it. That's a common policy, a practice throughout the district.
How many per day are they receiving currently at each school?
There's no number. It's based on, a lot of it's the weather, what's going on in the classroom, so on and so forth, but there are mask breaks that are taking place. We have not sent out two per hour.
Gentlemen, if you have a question, can you come down to the mic so everybody can hear you? Thank you.
Just in the middle of the school, like, ice, let them go outside and take their masks off. Not sit in that classroom anymore.
I just wanted a little more clarification as to when and how often they are getting them. I realize that when it's nice out, they can go out and have snack, sit outside, but I know, I'm an educator, I'm in a classroom, with students having a hard time breathing, the last thing I'm gonna do is say, oh, you need to wait right now, or, you know, you have to wait till snack. Take some sips of water. Do something. They should be penalized or punished for wanting to breathe and needing to breathe. I know that's what I do. I bring coffee, I have water, I'm constantly drinking because I can't breathe.
My message to the staff over the day and throughout last year and this year has been frequent mask breaks. That's what I have said. I have not outlined two every 15 minutes, or every 45 minutes, and so on. We have had discussions about, especially with the weather and so on and so forth, that we utilize more of a, if you need to take a break, take a break. But as you know, we're also recommending that within the classrooms, they have their masks on. So that's the catch-22, is how it actually happens. It shouldn't be happening during only ice at the middle school. That's not, that's not the practice that we should be practicing.
Okay, so at the lunch, at lunches, they're able to face-to-face, side-to-side, be unmasked, have lunch, but they can't while they're three feet or so apart at their desks?
Again, not my protocol. I sent out the protocol that was sent from DESI, as you know, to all the families, that basically outlines that in the classroom, the defining, I actually asked a question about, why is this allowed during lunches, but it's not allowed during the classroom breaks? And it was all has to do with a frequent mask breaks is what we've been asked to do. That's how I've defined it to the staff. I have not defined it with a number. We are having some internal discussions about being more, if you will, flexible, for lack of a better word, like, do you have a student that's not, maybe we have information about, or a student who was saying, you know, I need to take the mask break, that we just quote, allow for it to happen? But right now, that break is not taking place within the classroom.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, do we have any other comments?
Yes, Lisa.
Mr. Ford.
Thank you.
Given all of the stuff we've been seeing online, given the recent news of a lot of teachers being removed and withdrawn across the country because of affiliation with Antifa and other extremist organizations, I'd like to know if you guys have taken any steps to identify any potential extremist or activist teachers, and if you have any plans to do anything about that? And I'd also like to suggest that you submit a student questionnaire and asking them if there's anything that would make, that makes them uncomfortable from the current teachers or previous teachers.
Mr. Ford, you need to speed a little louder, so.
There are a lot of activist teachers. Some of them have been shown to be part of Antifa, which is a terrorist organization across the country. They've been removed from their jobs. So can we please ask the students, give out a questionnaire, and ask them if they have any experiences from the teachers that have made them uncomfortable, so that we can prevent them from being harmed?
Are you asking us if we're gonna do it right now?
Are you willing to look into the issue or maybe ask the students if there's any...
I think we felt...
I just asked you, are you willing to...
I think we felt that there was somebody who was in some extremist danger to the kids, and certainly we would, we would address that.
How would you find out if they are?
I'm not sure what you're...
How, how would you find out what's going on if you're not in the classroom?
If, if a parent has a specific complaint about a teacher's political views, a teacher's, whatever it may be, there's a process in place in, in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts in terms of personnel rights and a process that we have to institute within the contract and within the Massachusetts Labor Commission, which is, the complaint is filed by the party, the complaint is reviewed in terms of internally, an investigation is completed, and an investigation decision is made.
So is that a no? You're not willing to ask the students if anybody's...
I'm not gonna send out a general survey that says, does your teacher have extremist views? No, I will not do that.
What about if anything the teacher understands made them uncomfortable?
Again, that would be an individual issue if you had, as a parent or the child, with the teacher first and foremost, the principal, and it could end up at my office. I've, I've had a complaint against a staff member, and it's parent with a child says X, Y, Z happened. We give the due process rights. We can, depending on the type of investigation, goes to a certain administrator. From there, it goes as a recommendation to my office, it goes through legal counsel for both sides, and a decision is made.
All right. And there is a survey that is given to the kids. I don't know how frequently it's given, but it's, do you feel that your teacher is, do you feel that your teacher is listening to you? Do you feel like you're respected? It's gone both ways, both from the kids and the teachers. So that is a survey that has started five, four years ago? Through us, a off-site program, so it's not even done through us, and then they collect the data and give it to us. So yes, there are surveys taken.
Hi. I just was wondering if there was somebody to read something about how someone who was on Zoom earlier did raise their hand and had to leave the Zoom. So this is from David Gini, 25 Fletcher Way, father of two brand-new sixth graders. First, you would like to thank the members of the school committee, Dr. Beata, and everybody else involved in providing educational services to our kids, who are all in a very difficult position, and thank you for stepping up during this time and beyond. With that said, and understanding that there are limited options that we have within the DESI mandate, I'd like to voice and ask that until there are vaccines available for all age groups, my wife and I are vaccinated, my kids can't be because they are 11. It's simply not allowed. Masks are not in place to protect the person wearing them, they're in place to protect everyone else. When someone makes the decision to not wear a mask, that's a personal health decision. That's not a personal health decision, that's a public health decision. Given that there is simply no action I can take to protect my children today, I'd ask that we can keep the mask mandate in place so that we can all protect each other until a reasonable time after vaccines become available to younger children. Thank you.
Do we have any other comments? Next caller, 40 North West Street, Dr. Beata, and just my question to you is, what happens if Norton says, screw your DESI or not DESI?
So there's a, there's a number of ways that things could happen. So I have to, I carry out policies, so I have potentially my own license and my own career that could happen. I doubt it, but it could. The, the most difficult one would be the withholding of state funding. Again, I don't see it happening, but the fact of the matter is, the commissioner and the board, as you know, the board voted nine to one on this, so it was a pretty overwhelming support. There might have been one other person who voted yes, but probably could have made it eight to two instead of nine to one. But that would probably be the biggest thing. I don't think that receivership would be in play. I don't think that the school committee being quote fired, that's, that's, they're fired by you and hired by you, if you will. Those would be the two in play. I have heard this question come up from other superintendents as well in terms of parents that have asked for policy. I think one of you tonight mentioned that, that our theme earlier tonight was on the comment of the Norton School committee taking some type of action to say to the commissioner this should have been in local control, not a DESI control. I heard that, I think, two or three times tonight on that issue and other issues. That's been the typical. Probably the biggest funding source that they could withhold would be the current federal funding, because that hasn't, that's coming directly to, quote, coming to us. So that would be concerning, because that's almost $2 million. If it's a local budget, then that goes through the Department of Revenue, so that would be a freeze on our budget and so on and so forth. I think those are pretty extreme situations, so I don't wanna, you know, try to think that, I mean, certainly in a way that I think it would happen, but that, that could happen, I guess is the only phrase.
All right, that's all, thank you.
Hold on, I might get one up. So if all these 80%ers get vaccinated, correct, now they get to remove their masks, are you guys opposed to the 20% who will not get vaccinated to remove the masks? Because if they're vaccinated, they are protected, correct?
Are you opposed to, or is the grant being allowed?
Are you guys opposed to fighting it to allow all to get? I mean, if 80% of them are vaccinated, then...
So can I, can I just quickly respond? This is a question we have been asking the superintendents throughout the state in terms of, I said earlier, this October, an 80% situation, I just don't think it's gonna stand firm. That's where I am, because all these other changes have been made at the last minute. There has been, quote, inclined numbers of COVID cases. Just earlier today, there was two classrooms closed in one district. Our count right now is at a total of nine positive cases and two quarantined, a total of 11. Those are on our website, if you ever need to see it. And those numbers have increased. The town of Norton's numbers have gone up to a total of 69 as of the last two weeks, reports, that's all age groups, so I don't have that broken down for you. So if they're utilizing all of this data, if you will, regardless if you believe in it or not, if they're, because that's what they've been doing, and it's doing this, that I'm gonna guess that they're gonna have to do something with some of these comments that they've made about 80% and so on and so forth, because we also know that some vaccinated people are getting COVID. So I, I, I'm not trying to go around to a question, I just don't know where they're going to land. The recommendation was 80% who can open, but nobody's really, as I said earlier, really given us a definitive about how we figure out 80%. Do I just send you, as a parent, and say, please respond to this, is your child vaccinated? Yes or no? Yes, okay, and I stay honest, I take it for granted?
Yeah.
Or do I have to statistically, you know, have you show me a card? Or do I, do I just get the nurses to go on the, on the vaccination site, which they, you know, potentially have access to? We just don't know that then.
I also want to bring the attention to, 2003, we had a SARS pandemic. 2003, we had a SARS pandemic, and there was only 46,000 people, the whole world, who died from the virus. And all the tests that are being tested, the whole test kits that everyone was using, they're, they're not factual. They're, they're people who are taking and testing animals, and apples, and watermelon, and, and... and watermelon, and, and they're not, they're not factual. That's why they're recalling them. They all also have EOLA in it, I mean, EOL in it, which is ethanol oxide, which is a cancer-causing thing that's not even currently used in this country. And, and that's, that's what they're testing our children with, they're testing us humans with. It's, it's, I mean, that, that's why I'm opposed to ever having my child tested again, to be honest, because my whole work got shut down. Not one of the people had a fever, but they all tested positive besides the one guy who got sick outside of work. And then my whole family, my, my father, my mother, my, my stepparents, uh, my brother, my, tons of my family members, including my daughter, who only had it, she was only sick, but not even, she had a 99 temperature for, for less than 24 hours. I mean, or something like that.
I just want to be clear. From what I know and what I've received for information and the practice that I see we're doing, here's something said hip up. I do not see us testing students without parental consent. I do not see us asking students, I made it very clear to my staff, they just recently received another email from me, please do not ask students about vaccination or not. Now, in the protocol process, there's a protocol process for that with the older students, because that's through the nurse's office, uh, who's a, in our case, our, our nurses are, are in bachelor's degrees in science and master's degrees. So that's a typical process, if you will, but the fact of the matter is, it's a corrective process for testing, um, and of course then everything to do with vaccination. Um, and, and let's be careful, we have two, two discussions of vaccination taking place. So we have a school requirement of vaccination, right? Before you start school, unless it's medical or religious, and then we have this new thing, this new vaccination, that nobody has defined, that that's going to be a precursor to being in school, for example.
Yeah.
That has, if anything, it's, sounds like more like the flu shot. You take it or don't take it. That's what it sounds like to me, and I am not hearing from the state that they're, you know, saying that children have to be vaccinated to go to school. That's why there's a lot of concern about this 80% number.
I, I also want to state that if I had my mask on, everyone else is not at risk, because on my mask is protecting everyone else, you see, right? And if you're wearing your mask, you're now protected from me. So it's really no difference between if, if five kids out of a 20 kid classroom doesn't wear a mask, it, it really doesn't matter, and for the, for the breaks. Uh, I think at least, how long was I up there when I started testing? I mean, it's, that's science, that's science that I showed you guys. I showed, you've all seen the science with your own eyes. I mean, there, there is no argument with what you saw, it is what it is. That common dioxide is, is, is mad for you, everyone knows that, that, that kills you, it cuts down your white blood cell count. You literally lose white blood cells, so you cannot get, be able to fight an infection. Because when you get sick, your, your white blood cells reproduce faster, so if you're sick wearing a mask, that's why when, when people are really sick and they go in the hospitals, they only use the mask during transportation until they got to the hospital, until COVID happened, which I already stated, SARS has already happened before. In 2003, we had a pandemic already with 46,000 people who died. It, it's, this virus isn't as, as scary as everyone says it is. We all have an immune system. I mean, this, this virus has been around since 1960. I understand somebody played with it, that's, that's politics, I'm not going to get into that, because that's not something we're going to debate. I understand they made it more stronger and easier for you to spread, but when it moves, it goes wherever it wants, the mask is not going to stop it. There, there's no mask stopping it or anything like that. And when we got, we got a classroom of, like, say, 20, 30 kids, if, if you rotate every 10 minutes, five, six kids using a break, because my daughter's six years old, I asked her both days, having been taken off her mask, wants to go outside and wants to eat, I mean, that's, she's six years old, her brain's developing. I mean, especially these little kids, they, and we need oxygen. I mean, I can set that thing up to check your ox, my oxygen levels if everybody wants. I mean, it, it's, it's something that's wrong that we need to fix. And, and I get it, you're not the ones who making this happen, but like, you guys aren't supposed to be here to help, stand up beside us. You, you are our swords and our shields to our children in these schools, and we need everyone to stand up. I, I don't care whose feelings get hurt. Your feelings get hurt, you want to wear your mask, wear your mask. I don't care, I'm not telling you not to get vaccinated, I'm not telling you not to wear your mask. I'm giving you statistics, facts. As is the vaccine itself, it doesn't even match the definition of a vaccine. This is all experiments, you know what I mean? Nothing is factual. I will personally not be giving my child it because my own reasons. We, we all have an immune system, and our immune system is there for a reason. We are, we are amazing creatures. We are amazing creatures, we, our brain capacity, we can understand stuff ourselves, we can fight off any kind of virus, basically. And, and we, there is ways to do it. At the beginning of this virus, the reason why everyone died was because of IV protein. IV protein was given to the people in New York, it was already proven, it was already pushed out there. That is why New York had such high death rates. This is not killing kids, it's not killing people my age, not killing people your age, this is killing old people. And it, it's, it's being made to happen. It's, it's, it's being made to happen. And, and if somebody wants to wear a mask, you want your kid to wear your mask, you want, you want to get your vaccine, you, 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 people on the, uh, carnival, they all had their vaccination, they all wore masks, something like, what, 60% of them caught the virus from somebody who had a vaccine through the virus, and they wore a mask. This is not going to help us, our tests need to be tested elsewhere. All these other countries, they stopped doing the tests, they stopped doing all that, they're all going back to normal. We, we, our kids are our future. As, as a wise man once said, you do not plant a tree to enjoy the shade, you plant a tree for your children to enjoy that shade. This, this, this planet is for us to live, let our kids live here. You know what I mean? If somebody wants to wear the mask, teachers want to wear masks, they, they want to wear, they can do whatever they want. I proved with science that this is literally killing our kids, looking at the long-term effects of carbon, meth, dioxide, I'm sorry, I made something wrong. Carbon, carbon dioxide, look at the long-term effects, it's literally taken 20 years off my child's life for her to get an education. I am not a teacher. You ask my kid, what was your worst teacher last year? She'd say you, Dad. She will say, I am not a teacher, I am not a teacher. I'm hazmat certified.
You're best dad ever.
I, I am the best dad, I'm a single parent, I, I do everything I can for my kid, I'll, I'll give my blood, sweat, and tears to my child. And I, like I was saying, though, I'm haz, I'm hazmat certified. If, if one of our bells went off at our old place that we worked through the pandemic, because we all had to, we had to ship off the masks and the gloves and sanitizer, if, we had some kind of carbon dioxide go off, the whole building locks itself down. Any kind of chemical spill like that, it, it locks itself down, and you can't go back in until the firefighters say it's okay. I mean, this, this is like, these kids get this stuck on their face, and mine's a tin, like, very thin, it's like silk, cloth. It shouldn't be holding in as much as it is, and every time I'm talking, it's coming out of my mouth, and it's getting, getting all over the mask, and then breathing it back in. And everybody touches their mask. I, I, no offense, I've seen every single one of you guys touching masks, when you had to drink, when you had to talk, every single one of you guys had to touch your mask. Now, whatever you touched beforehand, that is now in your lungs, you are more prone to get a viral infection now. That's, never mind, um, bronchial, uh, I forgot what it's called, but it's when your, when your, your, your lungs can't open up no more because it's been trapped and pushed back too much, so now you can't get the amount of oxygen which means your brain ain't working. It, it, it's similar to having a stroke, and this is what we got our kids doing, it's, it's not right. And I don't care what teachers' feelings, what parents' feelings, that's, that's their problem. They could turn around, they say it's not our choice, I mean, I can choose whether my kid does anything better. It, it's my choice. Once, once that child is, I'm sure every single one of you guys are parents, you know? And when you look at your child, do you want to watch your child wear a mask? You know, I mean, you remember your first day of school? How excited you guys were, like, in any kind of grade? The kids aren't feeling that completeness, they can't interact with each other, somebody was talking about emotions on their face, I mean, how do you know? I mean, everybody here could be giving me a dirty look, I could be having other dirty looks behind me, you know? No one knows what's going on behind the mask. And, and honestly, it's just, it's so overwhelming that people are mean, 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 I don't want this virus to come get me, then go stay in a bubble, because I don't want my child to be poisoning themselves, because you're scared of a little germ. It's not, it's not right. I've seen, I have not seen personally one person die from this. I've watched elderly people catch it. I, I'm not saying it doesn't happen, I'm not saying it doesn't happen, but me personally, I have never seen somebody catch it and die. But I do know of people in certain prisons in this, this country, in the state, that have died from different things, but because it's COVID in their system, they die from COVID. There, there was a guy who died and talked, he, he overdosed, and that's an overdose, but he's a COVIDed in it. It's not right. I mean, we shouldn't be fearing a little germ, a little germ should be fearing us. We, we got the stuff to fight it, there is not one thing that we can't do to prevent it, but once we have it in our body, we have all the means to fight it off. It's just the virus. And that's all I'm going to say, I mean, it, it shouldn't be happening, our kids shouldn't be forced to wear this, these masks, because they need them to breathe, they need them to, to full, full body functions. I'm sure you guys feel it, I mean, you guys have to feel body aches, you know, I mean, you had, you get a headache and all that, I mean, it's, it's just not right, it's truly not right. We, we need oxygen, and our kids need more. I mean, they, they seriously do, that's it.
Thank you.
Hello again. I just point out that a town of Norton's police officer died on January 13th, 2021. Uh, his wife is a friend of mine, he leaves behind a sixth grader and third grader.
Is that...
No, wait a minute.
Wait, 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 wait.
Steven was a friend of mine. I was in Steven's wedding, Steven was at my wedding. I've been with Steven, I've known Steven for 25 years. Day one, he was hit in the head at least 10 times a day. He had other problems, other issues, I'm not saying that's going to kill him, but people don't hear the whole story all the time. Um, just, just come to that. According to the public health in England, adult diarrhea is 19%, that's legal as adults, 19%. Everyone keeps mentioning cases, you talk about Casey Griswold, who wants the kids coming out now, but nobody ever mentions the hospitalization of deaths. COVID, in my opinion, is the flu on steroids. Everybody knows it's real, everybody knows people are dying from it, but a lot of people, like the flu, they're going to get the flu, they get it, they're sick, they go home, they go back to work a couple days, that's what's happening with COVID. People are going to sit, it spreads faster than the original flu, but what we need to look at is hospitalizations and deaths. Ridiculously long, that's really mad, because COVID, like the flu, if anything, COVID's probably going to be everywhere, maybe rest of our lives, we're going to keep getting. But is it killing a lot of people now? Is it doing it first, you know? And what are the numbers? That's going to be an important issue. Thank you. Any other comments? Okay. Uh, I will briefly obtain Canadian numbers now. Okay. Um, take this off, actually. So I want to, uh, I want to thank everybody for coming out, I want to thank everybody for the comments, I want to thank you most for, for the respectful nature of everybody's comments, there was no, no back and forth in the audio, I really do appreciate that. Um, I think it shows what kind of town Norton really is. Um, you know, we're, we're going to, we're going to work on the policy tomorrow, that is on the agenda tomorrow, it's the only item agenda. Um, and we understand what you guys are saying, quite honestly, the, the one thing I think that we really are, are separated on here is whether or not we can arbitrarily ignore the DESI mandate. We have counsel as well, and our counsel's looked at it and said that they can operate, we can, we can do that without certain implications. What they would be, I, I don't know. Um, you wouldn't know what T actually did and saw what they did, uh, but, but I can assure you that everything you're saying, the idea that masks are for kids, nobody disagrees with that. I, I, I don't think anybody here is saying, hey, masks are so real, possible, I'm going to open up the back up comments.
I guess you have a question on that. I know you said that your counsel had said that you don't, they don't believe, but have you, has your counsel or has anybody of you reached out to DESI directly, their hotline they have, and asked them if, you know, you have a local decision for this discipline?
Joe, did our counsel ask DESI directly if they could agree?
I didn't.
Did DESI, did their, when counsel gave an opinion, did they ask DESI directly if they were allowed to?
Counsel's interpretation is of DESI's, uh, protocol that they put out and the policy that they put out, that's their response. Now, since 2000 and, I think it's 16, I'm not, don't quote me on the date, the Commonwealth through legislation voted to change student disciplinary processes in the state, is in a, in a direct, uh, response to the number of expulsions that were happening in, predominantly cities, but also in suburban schools, it was not an open issue for the record. Um, it became a mandate that, in the, for example, when I was a principal, I would call a parent and he goes through the process, the child suspended for X, Y, Z, act, whatever it was. In this particular case, since this new regulation came out, we have to work with parents and quote, finding alternative means to discipline on almost everything that we do. For example, we now have to utilize what's called a two-day exclusion before we can actually make it a suspension for a significant issue that causes, quote, the health and well-being of the school of individuals. So that's this protocol. I'm happy to call DESI, um, tomorrow and say to them, X, Y, Z, and get a response to whatever questions folks want. Um, I, I would say that the information that I have received and I have read, and I know you, some of you have as well, it's using it as a last resort. I think the question comes down to if a student refuses to, folks are going to say, well, then they can go into the classroom. The argument is that violates the very policy that's in place, that they have to wear a mask, unless it's because of, uh, medical or behavioral and documented. So how does a school system that has a student family saying, I'm not wearing a mask, then allow that student into the classroom, into the building, if you will, the policy is in the building you have to be masked?
Because you amended policy, and that's what we're asking them to do, please.
I don't, I don't believe that that amendment would, would, uh, would work, but I'm happy to ask them that, not a problem.
I agree with that.
Sure.
Thank you.
Forget my ignorance about, like, the whole, hey, this all works in, like, district or state and all that, but do you guys ever meet with the state or with D to represent us to their decision-making, or is it strictly like you guys just talk to us and then nothing happens between you guys and the state decision?
Mr. Jim, if I may. So, in general, Joe, the way that, excuse me, Mr. Ford, the way that it works is that almost everything that DESI gets, in general, comes through your elected state legislators, so the state house and the state senate. There's some type of a law that's passed, and then DESI is, is put into place to implement that law based on, in this case, K to 12 education, or if it's an only childer situation with the pre-teen. Then, we do meet, we've had meetings with our elected officials, the state reps and the state senators, hasn't happened much during COVID, to be quite honest. We've had elected officials come to our meetings. Um, we've gone on the day on the Hill, which is we can go physically up to the state house and visit to ask them about certain situations and bills that have filed. This year, there's over 4,000 bills that have been filed.
I've been reading a lot of them.
Yeah, and there's a, there's a ton of new bills that have been filed, there's a lot of them around curriculum instruction.
You know, but on those bills, one of them is actually about giving the school nurses the ability to give shots, and in the context, it was talking a little bit more about, like, diabetes medication and stuff, but it didn't specifically say anything about maybe giving a COVID shot. Are you familiar with that? Are you familiar with that at all?
I believe that in every situation, I am not aware of that bill, but I can tell you on behalf of my nurses that they follow the protocols that are coming through direct communication with the family doctor through the family about a student. For example, a student that's taking insulin. I have students that are going to the nurses every hour on the hour for a review of their insulin. That's a process between the medical doctor of the child, the parent. Some cases, the child, if they're older, they're involved, if you were with their mom and dad, their guardian, whoever they're with, and then their medical doctor. Everything is documented through our school nurses in order to be able to do that. I have not heard, for example, the flu clinic was provided last, I want to say a year and a half ago now, maybe, that was provided to actually students that went through the entire process of parental consent, signing off, so on and so forth. So I don't see bills that are going to, especially in the Commonwealth, go through that are going to say that, you know, "I can just give you a shot". I don't think that's going to happen.
One of the other bills that they're putting forth was actually brought forth by the Department of Homeland Security, and it's about doing a whole nother set of lockdown procedures, separate from the typical, like, you know, school shooter lockdown. Is that why you guys are no longer doing the regular lockdown drills?
That's a great question. So Norton Public Schools have been a member of an active shooter training situation every year since I've been here. I actually instituted one of the trainings when I came here nine years ago. We continue to do so. During COVID, we made some changes in the presentation to students, if you will. For example, we made a decision based upon the schedule we were on, so on and so forth, that we didn't have traditional lockdown drills. If you recall, we don't do a lockdown drill without communicating with you, typically the night before, that we're going to have a practice tomorrow, so maybe you can have a conversation with the child before they come to school. Or we have to do a follow-up phone call, because we agreed with the parent that the child needs some comforting when they leave school. COVID took us for some curveballs, but I did mention in discussion today with us, two school resource officers on a question that was asked. And we did do the training, hyper-turkeyed training, we just did it differently in terms of our staffing. We were following COVID protocols at the time, so we were having a difficult time of lining up and so on and so forth. So we had presentations that were done via video by our staff, and we ourselves, as a staff, had to go through that. We are currently working with our SROs to actually implement, continue to implement our specific training that we do for active shooter and/or crisis situations within our schools.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, it's, we're coming up on two and a half hours here. If there are no other comments, I guess we will wrap it up for the night. Again, thank you very much for coming out, we appreciate all the comments. Awesome, very valuable comments made tonight. And again, we'll be looking at the policy tomorrow and seeing what you can advise. Thank you.